Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Morse. I'm the superintendent of schools here in Oyster River, and I'm in the odd place of running the meeting tonight for as long as it takes for the board to make a decision about who they wish to have be their chair for the upcoming year. So, thank you for tuning in. So, the first motion I'll be looking for tonight is a motion for chair for the upcoming school year.
I'd like to nominate Michael Williams for chair.
And is there a second?
Second.
So Denise and Dan, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Is June -- well, it's almost unanimous, I assume. You abstained?
I will abstain.
Okay. And Michael's abstained, so Michael, you can have your chair back.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thank you for the support, I think. I was hoping for the -- all right. So, our next order of business is to elect a vice chair. So, I will open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Dan?
I'd like to nominate Denise Day.
Denise Day? We have a second from UC. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Denise for vice chair? Six in favor?
No.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
Abstentions? All right. Six votes in favor Denise has elected vice chair. All right. Next is the approval of the agenda. I would like to -- I've got the agenda in front of you. I'd like to ask that we move the middle school playground update to immediately after public comments, if that's all right with everybody, so that we can let that group get up first if they want to not stay for the whole meeting. So with that addition, Brian?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
A second from Heather. All those in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the agenda is approved. So that brings us to public comment.
Before we do that, Michael, would you like to introduce our new board members?
Oh, yes, of course, yes. Would you like to do that?
I think that's your honor.
Oh, okay. So we have two new members that were elected last week, and they are Heather Smith and Matt Bacon. Would you each like to take one minute to introduce yourselves? Heather?
I'm a little tired of introducing myself after the election. So, I'm Heather Smith. I live in Durham. I have a 5th grader at the middle school and a 1st grader at Mulharamit. And I am really thrilled to be here and very honored to be elected.
I'm Matthew Bacon. I'm a parent in the district also. I have five kids in the district, or I tell Jim I'm 25% of the district. I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that supported me and reached out with congratulations, and I'm happy to be here.
I'll just take a moment to congratulate. All right, Michael.
All right. Now, public comment?
No.
All right. So we have one person signed up for public comment tonight, so Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much. It became clear at the last meeting that I hadn't said everything I should say. One, about the population in your building. I started out in that old school with eight rooms, the core square building. That's it. I was the first class that was split, so we had two sections. We had about 65 kids in between the two sections. And only a couple of years before me, they only had about 15, 16 people in the class. So it grew quickly. So, the idea that because we have a temporary downturn, for whatever reason, in population doesn't mean it's going to stay that way. So, I'm quite happy with the accommodations that we have for the number of students that it'll handle, because that school's going to be around here a long after that downturn in student population is here, still here. Two, the most important thing is that it costs the school district about a quarter million dollars a day per day of instruction, 180 days a year. And we can't lose sight of that, and we can't have problems that impact that negatively, period. I talked to a girl yesterday who is one of your students, I think a junior. She came here from Wells, and she said that the academic standings or academics of your school is noticeably better than where she came from, and she's challenged. As far as bidding goes, I was an electrical contractor. I worked on big jobs and little jobs. And sometimes, when you've got a track record with somebody, I had one contractor I worked for, Frank Malone out of Dover. He knew more about what I was going to charge on a job than I did. He could tell me how many outlets. He could tell me how much wire I was going to use, because he knew the square footage, the rooms where he wanted stuff laid out. The guy was really good. He was sort of the standard of the industry back. He started in the '50s. I worked for him in the '70s, I think in the '80s, but -- So you get to a point with someone, he'd just call me up and say, "Go wire it." He's not asking the price. He knows what my rates are and how I work, and he'll come over and lay some stuff out special in a particular room for furniture, and you know. So, now I realize that $45,000 school doesn't really translate, but it is all the same idea. So I'm not the least bit concerned about competitive bidding. You've got a good thing going here, stick with it.
Okay. Mr. Rubin?
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. First, I'll talk about math counts. I'm the math counts co-coach along with Ms. Galing. We're sending seven kids this year to the state finals, which are on March 31st, which is pretty soon. So we're all excited about that. Our top two are actually a 7th grader and a 6th grader, so we've got a good future ahead of us, too. I also want to congratulate the board members who've gone, Heather and Matt, and congratulate the board in the district for winning on all the questions. That's all I have to say. I know you guys will do great stuff. Thanks.
Hello. I didn't know about signing up. May I speak?
Okay. Yes, your name?
My name is Richard England.
And town of residence?
Durham. I'm a long-term resident of Durham and the father of two adult children who attended the Oyster River Schools. I'm also a retired educator who taught at UNH for 40 years. I'd like to comment on the hiring of a diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice coordinator for the Oyster River Schools. In my opinion, filling this position could help to promote racial equality and harmony within the Oyster River community and our broader society. However, there's also a risk that appointment of a DEIU coordinator would amplify racial cleavages instead of reducing them. Which of these outcomes would actually occur depends, at least in part, on who fills the position and what educational agenda he or she pursues. Let me illustrate my concern with one example. In 2019, the New York Times launched a media campaign called the 1619 Project. The premise of that campaign is that, quote, "Slavery has shaped everything in America, even our democracy itself." This bold claim was made by a Times journalist who is not a professional historian. However, as several eminent historians of slavery, some of them African-American, have pointed out, the 1619 Project suffers from numerous errors of historical fact and errors of logical reasoning. Nonetheless, materials based on the 1619 Project have been adopted by some school districts as their American history curriculum. I hope this doesn't happen in the Oyster River District. And I hope that a newly hired DEIU coordinator would not promote use of 1619 Project materials without proposing scholarly critiques of those materials as part of the curriculum. Let me close my remarks by saying that I hope Oyster River hires a DEIJ coordinator who sees every child as having untapped potential and innate worth regardless of skin color. It would be tragic if a newly hired coordinator entered the district with a desire to sort children into racial categories, where some children are presumed to be privileged and others are presumed to be victims. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. would have preferred the former approach to ending the racial inequalities that remain in our nation. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. All right. So, that brings us to the middle school playground.
Good evening, everyone. Jerry Shire, president of the middle school. I'm just going to hand us out, this is just a quick, you know, overview of what the site plan looks like. Just a little bit of background about the process. We worked with the middle school PTO. We had several parent volunteers. We looked at a couple of different companies. And with the support of our parent volunteers, we decided to hire Compan. One of the things also in terms of, Eric's going to share some of the equipment that was selected. Our parents vetted and selected this equipment through, you know, through Eric's resources. So this is, again, parents selected with student insight as well. It was a great group of people, and I'm going to turn it right over to Eric, who's been wonderful to work with. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. First off, thank you all for choosing Compan. We greatly appreciate your business. We just really quickly are a design-led, research-based, age-appropriate equipment manufacturer, which means we're fun, is what it comes down to, so the kids will love the equipment. The main piece that you can see up here is the Explorer Dome. It's a large climber with lots of excitement. There's some neighboring towns in New Hampshire that have had it, that have thoroughly enjoyed it. It offers a wide range of excitement, as well as ADA accessibility and inclusivity. The second piece of equipment is the net twister. So this offers cross-body coordination while spinning in motion to work on vestibular stimulation for the children. A large part of what Compan does is our material choices. So this is all hot-dip galvanized steel, and we're proud to say that you folks are going to be involved with one of our first green line purchases in New Hampshire, which is a 72% post-consumer recycled material content. So, very, you know, something to certainly feel proud about. This next item is the Blocks III. So this is a three-dimensional climber. Many climbers are rope-based, so we wanted to offer some various climbing. This is your more graduated challenge for the older children. The next piece is a moving carousel. It's the Supernova. This is the number-one piece of play equipment in the world, actually. So it works on a bearing system that allows it to move around. Children can sit on it, stand on it, age-appropriate for school-age children. The Cocoa Wave Pendulum Swing is a great multi-generational piece. I can see, you know, kids certainly using it during school hours, but also parents and grandparents using it on the weekends as well. It's a really nice place to be able to sit, very accessible. And so, it's also about a 12-foot frame, so very exciting, visually stimulating for the children, and attractive. Lastly, I have the site plan that will go kind of to the bottom right of what Jay gave you. So this is just a quick overview of that equipment. Any questions? Yes?
I have one question about just the general layout. So is there an area in the play space for kids to just, you know, like do their four-square or do other things like that?
So we're going to be in recess heaven, literally. You know, kids love recess, so if you look at this, and you know it's very small, we're going to have a field turf next fall. I mean, I'm really looking forward to this. Our students love soccer, football, kicking the ball around, anything that looks like just kind of hanging out. So they're going to have the field. You see the black dot right there, Denise? That's actually where the playground equipment's going to go, in that back corner. That's more detailed there that Eric shared with you. And then, on the other corner where you see the building, you see three basketball hoops, and you actually see four-square courts. That's not on Eric's drawing. He just has the playground equipment. But on this drawing, you can see the four-square courts. So we have two four-square courts and three basketball hoops. Very exciting.
Jay?
Yes?
Because of where that is, though, that's also the receiving area. We, and I forgot if we discussed this in our other meetings, but do we limit delivery times?
Yes, we've talked about that with our cafeteria, you know, doors to mirrors. In, I don't want to say it's the same situation, it's far from it from the old school, but if a delivery driver ever came in while we're outside at recess, we expect that to wait until it's safe and the kids have returned back into the building. So that area is always supervised. So, delivery drivers are encouraged to come outside of lunch recess hours, always. We prep them with that, but as we all know, real life, things happen, traffic. But if they do show up and the kids are outside playing, we expect they wait until the kids are ready to go back into the building, and it's safe.
What's the construction timeline for the playground?
So, we were looking to start in, right when school gets out, so probably the third week of June. We would imagine a duration of about three weeks to install the equipment.
That's fast.
Yeah, it's fast, yeah.
What's the surface?
So the surfacing is, as you can see, there's actually some highlighted blue areas. That's actually a matte pathway for accessibility that will lay on top of wood chips, which refer to as engineered wood fiber.
How did you refer to the wood chips again?
Engineered wood fiber is the industry jargon term.
Is that something special, or is it wood chips?
It's wood chips that are made so that if a child falls on them, they can't get any splinters or get stuck.
Splinters removed.
Yeah.
On a more serious note, are any of the pieces of equipment accessible for students with mobility challenges?
Absolutely, absolutely. The large majority of all the equipment was universal design intent is something that Compan always prides itself on. So, for example, in the large climber, there's a hammock seat in there. It's accessible in that a child, if they were in a mobility device, could get under there and transfer into it. But what's more important is that it's inclusive and that they're in the play with the other children. So as the nets bouncing, they're looking up, they're interacting with the other children. So again, to make it not just accessible but inclusive. So certainly, and this, you know, exceeds the ADA guidelines.
How do the students get from the playground area out to the turf field during recess? This is for Jay.
Great question. So we'll have two areas to supervise, the front of the building. Students will exit the front of the building to go to the field turf. And in regards to heading out back, they'll do the same, walk the pathway out to go back to the basketball courts and the playground. That's the plan right now. Again, we do not, we'll make adjustments as necessary. There's also thought we're, it's really kind of hard to see, but we do plan for exterior eating opportunities on that patio. We're working, Dr. Morse and I are working on plans for potential furniture out there. So, I guess it's really kind of like a draft. And one thing's, when we think about paths, you know, the kids will kind of tell us what the best way to get to the field is and the equipment, but I can say for sure, to the field, it'd definitely be right out to the front of the facility.
When we talk about student-defined paths, that's a tip, that actually goes back to my college days, where the groundspeople would not lay down the sidewalks until they figured out where the students were going to walk. And so, as Jay's thinking about the front, it's pretty easy. The back, right now, he's using a back door for the kids to get out to the playground, the current mud ground that will become the playground. So it'll depend on which end of the building that they want to use. The nice thing about the Learning Commons is it connects both ends. So it'll be pretty easy to do that. The one design that we were trying to go for when we started conceptualizing this was to put the playground equipment on the same side as the field, but the geography just didn't support that. So that's why we will have two different locations for the kids to play.
I can't remember, is that the retaining wall down through there, around the backside? So is there going to be fencing?
Yep, there is.
The fencing is there now.
It's already there.
We're also going to be putting up Heather netting on that corner that faces Code Drive. We had our first, I was present when it happened, our first student who managed to get the ball over the fence. So, there'll be netting on the soccer field because of how close it'll be to Code Drive and how close it'll be to the parking area. And there'll be netting in the corner of the play area that faces Code Drive, all for the same reasons, to keep balls from hitting the road or hitting cars.
And that's just like you would see at Fenway Park, very candidly, to make sure that things don't go over the fence.
On the drawing you gave us, Jay, what's the small rectangle at the bottom of the field? I can't quite read.
Yes, so there's a possibility we might be able to put, like a swing set there on the, you know, that side of the field. And the intent with that is, for example, if parents are there to watch their child play a soccer match or a field hockey game, that younger children would have an opportunity to have a play structure. So we're still working through that with our construction company to make sure that that's an appropriate location.
And the issue there, Michael, is that that space is so tight between the field and Code Drive. So if you're going past old school, you see all the beautiful trees. So we're trying to preserve those trees. But just below those trees, we think that we can fit in a swing set, which will help entertain preschoolers while the parents are watching the middle school kids. So, we are having conversations with the contractor right now about how we can fit that in, because it's really important for the parents to be able to enjoy their middle school kids, to have something on that side of the field for them to do. So, swings always entertain little ones.
There's also a lot of ledge over there that we have to work around and blast through to get that corner squared away, so.
And the other part of this just doesn't fit in the playground. It fits in Jay's vision for the school, is the bicycle racks. So we're going to try to keep the bicycle racks on the Code Drive side of the school, because we're trying to coax kids into coming into the front of the building and not coming from the parent-access side. And they'll be looking for where the bicycle racks are. Our latest discussion was whether we could keep the old racks right where they are and then put new ones down below. So again, if students are coming to the game, they can put their bicycles in either lot. We probably have 75, 80 kids once, well, today, I imagine it probably doubled.
Kids riding bikes Monday, even in the cold weather.
Once they get a mo, that middle school has more bicyclers than I've ever seen in any school, and more walkers than the entire district. So it's really tight neighborhood, and we're trying to make sure that it makes sense to the students, so.
I do want to share one more thing. When we look at this design, and for example, my, you know, kids can have access to the playground, one of the things, security is very important to us. So we do allow exits from the building outside, but it is a requirement that all students to get back into the building will need to come through the front doors, and that's for security protocols, which are very important, we take very serious.
So they go out to the playground or the ball, the basketball, on the backside of the building, they're going to come around on the front to get back in?
Correct.
And there's sidewalks from the back to the front, so.
Very safe. It's not that far of a walk, but, you know, we all sometimes want to take the quickest route, and that goes for my staff, too, in the morning. My expectation, all staff come through the front of the building in the morning.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim, shall we go ahead, and since we talked construction, shall we talk deconstruction?
Sure, I can do that really quickly. So, Michael asked me to touch base with the contractors in terms of their timeline for tearing down the old building. That will begin on April 4th. So what they'll do is they'll start at the old gym end of the building, and they'll move forward to the original section of the building. Part of that process is for Jay to be able to do a fundraiser with the bricks from the original building. So he's developed a stencil. And rather than set a price, we're just going to let people pay what they feel they want to pay. And the logic behind that is, you know, somebody has a buck, they pay a buck. If somebody wants to contribute 20 bucks, they can do that. But the idea, we've gotten a lot of requests from the community about the buying a brick from the old school. So that's another smaller fundraiser that Jay has organized. And so, do you want more than that, Michael? Right now, they're in asbestos abatement. That's pretty close to what we budgeted. We may have to spend a little bit more. So over the decades that that school was there, under federal law, asbestos was abated, that you could see. But when you have a building that old, when you start taking down ceilings, you start finding places where it wasn't mitigated. So right now, literally, no one can go in that building because there's pockets here and pockets there. But it was all within the predictable range that we thought we might find. The big issue is there's a, there's, I was thinking about how to say this. There's a old boiler that was buried in concrete. So when they, and it's unfortunately, it's above the grade for the new field. So it has to be addressed. They haven't broken into that particular bunker. And when they do, if there's asbestos, it'll have to be mitigated. But the goal is to yank it out and then get rid of it. So, that's all part of the process. The other thing that, in terms of the building coming down, just so the board knows, is the contractor is trying to, so I talked a little bit about the beautiful trees that are in front of the old building that we're trying to protect. But right in front of those beautiful trees is a huge piece of granite that pops out of the ground. And you maybe visualize it as you're going down Code Drive. It's right, it's pretty obvious. So initially, on the plans, we thought we'd have to blast that granite out of the way. But in trying to protect the trees, we may be able to avoid that cost. So they're working with the engineer to see whether it's necessary, because we do need to widen the road right there a little bit. But whether we need to mitigate that is now up in the air as they're trying to investigate it and getting closer to the reality of doing that work. So that's where we are, Michael. Is there any questions anybody has related to mitigation?
We'd start April 4th. How long will the demolition take?
Three weeks. It'll be gone that quickly.
Wow.
They need to really be aggressive in order to start building the turf field. It's really hard to envision, but the turf field literally goes through the existing building. And so, the building is in the way, and so we need to get it down. And then the other piece of the work is what they're going to do on Dennison. So if you can envision that curb-side piece where people pull over, well, that actually is going to be sidewalk. So the sidewalk is going to come out to about where that white line is, so that they can create a slope that parents can sit on to watch the games. So we need to pull the sidewalk further toward the road in order to make the slope rational and reasonable for people to pull out a blanket and sit down and, you know, watch their students, their children, play. So the whole concept behind that was take advantage of the topography, and that's what we're in the process of getting ready. And that probably will happen, my guess is, almost immediately after school is out.
Will there still be parking on Dennison?
Yes. So again, just a compliment to the town of Durham. They've been great partners on this project. The parking spaces on Code Drive, because we were thinking about, you know, if we have a music event, we need every parking spot that we can possibly, you know, get. So Dennison will still have parking, and I think Code Drive, and where they put the extra spaces in. And then, you know, I want to reach out to the town library and, you know, if it's an evening performance, if we can use their parking space. And then, you know, worse comes to worse, you can park at the high school and walk up. So, the parking in an inner, I consider this an inner-city school, even though, you know, we're a small rural town. But it has all the ramifications of an inner-city school, and parking is one of them. And so we knew that parking was going to be tight. There's going to be about 200 parking spots on-site, as opposed to the 100 we had before. That's not including Dennison, that's not including Code Drive, and it wouldn't include the possibility of the library parking in the evening. So, you know, Todd's, the Public Works Department, every division of the So, you know, Todd's, the Public Works Department, every division of the town of Durham has been so incredibly cooperative. And when we run into a hiccup, and Todd has been part of the committee, the town manager, you know, he's been very proactive in trying to make sure things don't get slowed down, because, you know, we're trying to figure something out. Steve Height, the engineer, has been amazing. He's always showed up when we need him. Provided the detail that the towns needed and the contractors needed. So we continue to have this very positive relationship with the town and the contractor that I don't see ending until the project is done, done.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's important for the community to know, have a window into what that demolition schedule is, even though I think everybody who's paying attention knows that at some point, that school's got to come down. It's going to be a visual shock when it actually does. Even if you're not right at the middle school, just driving up Madbury Road and looking up the hill, it's not going to be there anymore in six weeks.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
That brings us to the approval of the minutes from March 2nd. Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 2nd regular meeting minutes.
A motion from Denise and a second from Brian. Any changes? Denise?
Yeah, on page five, the heading is not LRPS, it should be LRPC for Long Range Planning Committee.
Did you catch that?
Others? All right, all in favor of approving the March 2nd minutes with that change? Five in favor and the student rep in favor. Opposition abstentions, two abstentions. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith, MoHerramitt. Just two announcements today. One about our teacher workshop day, which is in two days. And then my other announcement is about after-school activities. Our teacher workshop day, I'm happy to announce, is with both Mastway and MoHerramitt together. That is a pre-COVID activity that we did a great deal. And then through the pandemic, we were able to meet remotely a lot last year. And it'll be great this year to be able to get back together and really do the full K4 work. In addition, we're actually having fifth grade come with us for a large portion of the day, because we're connected to our strategic plan. We're doing a lot of work in English Language Arts, connected to Tier One. And as we'll talk today, Tier Two and Tier Three work with students for reading. And so we have district employees, teachers, reading specialists, special educators, who are leading different classes, as well as consultants we've worked with in the past, who will be leading workshops for us for the whole morning. And then we have opportunities to continue that integration and curriculum work throughout the rest of the day. So that's a nice focus on our strategic plan and a way for us to really get back together, K4. So we're pretty excited about that. That's going to be at Mastway on Friday.
David Ford, Matt, and Heather, can you spell out what MTSS is?
Oh, sure, sir. Part of our strategic plan is really looking at creating a system in our school system that lets us know all of our students and then support them effectively and efficiently as an entire team, as opposed to every teacher working with all their students. And of course, teachers know their students very, very well. But how do we go beyond that one classroom? And then how do we support everybody and take advantage of everyone's resources to be able to do that the best? And so there've been some, it's called multi-tiered systems of support. And, you know, Suzanne, Philippone, and us will be coming back to do some of that on this agenda. But think of it as like Tier One is everybody gets it. And then Tier Two, some people get it. And Tier Three, a smaller group gets that, and it's just based on need. So we'll go into more detail about that. Thanks, Dr. Morse. And then my other announcement is about after-school activities. We've had them all year, run by Durham Park and Rec and Seven Rivers. And I just have to give incredible compliments to them. They're just a great group to work with. And they've provided just a huge range of activities for our students and for Mastway students and middle school students who are brought over to our school in the afternoon for those programs. In addition to that, we've had some more MoHerramitt-based, PTO-sponsored activities, which are really exciting. We've had a number of Destination Imagination groups that just finished up. They did a huge number of weeks. Ms. Smith was one of the leaders of the first-grade group. We had a first-grade DI group, a second-grade DI group, and then a combined three, four DI group. They worked every week for, I don't know, six, eight weeks, something like that?
Thanksgiving?
And, oh, since Thanksgiving, even more. And then multiple days leading up until this past weekend, when they had their big statewide exhibitions. They all did really well. It was very exciting to see them do that. That was something that we had done pre-COVID as well. And then we right now have an art club being run by a sophomore here at Oyster River High School. She comes back to MoHerramitt on Wednesdays and leads a comic graphic novel art class, which is really awesome. So just some really nice extracurricular activities that have been happening all year and some new ones that are finishing up and starting in the spring. So I wanted to share those with you. And Heather and Matt, welcome to the board.
You.
Thank you.
Jerry Schardigan, principal at the middle school. We talked a little bit about demolition. Now something that's very popular is the old 1935 bricks from the school. So I've been working with the contractor. We're actually going to create a pallet of bricks, which is 500 bricks. So we're going to start with that. And we also have a stencil. So what we're going to do, I'm going to start pushing that out to the Durham Updates, Lee, Madbury, et cetera. So if people are interested in getting a brick from the 1935 portion of the building, they can reach out to the middle school. And what we'll do is we'll take donations for the bricks. The amount, whatever people want to donate, could be $50, could be 5 cents. But we want to make sure that people, if they want a brick from the old 1935 building, that we get that to them. And the stencil, essentially, it's not finalized yet, but say something like 1935 to 2022, ORMS. So something to look forward to. David already mentioned, we have a lot of ongoing clubs right now. We had a DI group too, where Kathy Lammy had reached out to me several weeks ago and said, hey, I have a group of kids who want to participate in this DI tournament. Other groups had several months of preparing and practicing. And this group only had several weeks, and they came in second place in the state tournament this past weekend. So that's really, really impressive. They actually started practicing in the old school, in the old library, and they actually finished up their activities in the new Learning Commons, which was really, really cool and special to watch. Dean mentioned about our math counts team. I don't know if he mentioned, but Dean volunteers actually every single week to come in and help the math counts team. And he works with our math teacher, Ruth Gelling. And a little bit about the teacher workshop day on Friday. My staff are very involved in several things. My fifth-grade staff will go down and work with the K5 group in terms of literacy training, which is, of course, a part of our strategic planning. We also have a group working with Mike Anderson at the middle school. The high school group has staff doing that as well. We'll have a pot lunch in the Learning Commons that our staff are going to bring items in, which is a really fun part of team building, which is really important. And lastly, we'll do CPR training in the afternoon. So, thank you.
Can you remind the board about the robotics group?
Okay, yes. So we have three teams going to the world championships in, I think it's early May, which is, you know, it's unbelievable. I mean, we have the best robotics program in the state of New Hampshire. It's really kind of that simple. And we have two outstanding coaches, John Savario and Jason Duff. The kids are actively getting ready for that in May. So looking forward to this opportunity for them. It's a special group.
Can you do a quick update on Washington DC trip?
Sure, absolutely. So we're in the planning phases. We're looking forward to go to Washington DC. I actually have a trip coordinator, Trish LeBarre from SKI93. That's a local organization here in New Hampshire. We've used that organization for the past, I think I've been going now for at least 10 years. Unfortunately, the past two years, we missed out on going on this DC trip. Trish plans everything for us. It's all staffed by ORMS teachers, myself, Bill Sullivan, my assistant principal, our SRO, Officer Mike Nicolosi, he'll be going, our school nurse, just a great, you know. But all the things I do all year, a lot of it's a lot of fun. But that's something I really look forward to as a school principal, because these are my eighth graders. And we get to go down, and we have 120 students going down this year. It's been a challenge, to say the least, in terms of planning, because first, there was masks and vaccination requirements. So it's really kind of a moving target. But our coordinator, again, SKI93, organizes all that. And we're looking for the opportunity, April break. So we'll be gone from early Saturday morning to late Tuesday night. So.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal of Oyster River High School. Quite a few announcements for tonight. So first, we had a group of our track students that went to the New Balance Nationals this weekend and performed pretty well. I got a chance to visit with Coach Richardi up in his classroom, and he just expressed how impressed and proud he was of them. He kind of compared it to running a marathon, the buildup and the excitement. Then you go to the event, and I heard they had an absolute blast. They got to see professional track athletes there who are getting awarded. And then it's kind of like the now what. I mean, they wouldn't have believed it if they didn't have pictures. So they really enjoyed themselves this past weekend. And we had SAS testing start today, the science testing. So I checked in with our science department, and that went really well. So that will finish up tomorrow. We have our SATs and PSATs next Wednesday. And our ninth graders will have some programming that we're bringing in the Brown Center for Team Building with ninth-grade advisories. We also have Breathe New Hampshire coming in to do a presentation to the ninth graders and advisory. So they'll have those two activities. For our virtual visitors we have coming up in March, our student DEIJ group has Tona Brown coming on March 30th. So she is a nationally known, internationally known, actually, orchestra performer. And so she'll be working with our orchestra on that day as a masterclass. And then that evening, the DEIJ group will host a community event, and it's on identity and intersectionality. And so they will actually have more coming out about that very soon. On March 31st, our tech integrators have Katie Greer coming, and she'll present to the middle school and high school during Advisory Flex on digital citizenship. And then that night, she'll have a community event for parents on digital citizenship. And then this Friday, for our teacher workshop day, we have a lot of in-house professional development. And so we actually have an adaptive technology for all, and one of our teachers is running that. Ask not what you can do for your database, but what your database can do for you, run by Lisa Harling, our librarian. Some competency-based teacher share-a-thon, where you have teachers coming in and talking about how they're doing and performing competencies in their classrooms, and just talking about how they do that in different disciplines. We have an Equity Pulse that two of our teachers are running through New Hampshire Listens. A Discovery Education, so Bring Discovery into Your Classroom, and that's tech from Celeste Best, our tech integrator. And then Canva, I'm going to that one. So that's something that you can do with making flyers better and doing Instagram and the kind of things that, how you promote what you're doing in the classroom for kids. And then there'll also be some individual work time. They'll also have department time to work on curriculum. And then we have an Amazing Race Bobcat style for our staff for the last hour of the day for little community building also. And that's all I had for right now. Are there any questions?
Talk to us about Amazing Race.
Well, so we haven't explained it to the staff yet. It's a surprise. So it's.
It won't be a surprise if you explain it to them.
Exactly. So it is something we've built, they have staff teams that they've actually created, different teachers from different disciplines on eight different staff teams. And so they'll have some things they do in the building. There are prizes at the end. So anyone listening, they do get prizes. But I'll tell you more about that the next meeting, if that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
How are professional development, how are sort of the workshop priorities and programming developed?
So all of these are in-house, so teachers could sign up for what they felt they needed. So each teacher is asked to sign up for at least two out of three sessions that we're having. So many of those are running multiple times out of the three different sessions that we have. So for example, I signed up for the Canva, and I signed up for the competency-based teaching. So I wanted to hear what teachers were doing, be able to talk about competencies and how they're implementing them, what are their ideas moving forward? And so that's how they were signed up.
Any teacher or teacher team or staff team that wanted could offer something that would be on the menu?
Absolutely, yes. Actually, Celeste Best, our tech integrator, put out the call to see who was interested in actually giving professional development and what topics people wanted covered. And so if there are topics that came out, she then went in search of someone who might be able to do that or people who offered to run the professional development. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
I apologize, David Goldsmith still. Principal Noe reminded me, and thank you for mentioning the digital safety workshop. Katie Greer is doing that. It's actually also for second, third, and fourth graders. They'll be hearing the same presentation at the same time via Teams. And the evening program is open clearly for all parents, including those at the elementary level. But our second through fourth graders will also be taking part in that really important program.
Principals, we're reporting tonight, it's nice to start seeing things come back into live interactions with students and staff. So the transition continues.
All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? All right. And that brings us to district reports. So Assistant Superintendent Orr, COVID metrics, COVID metrics?
So Suzanne has a much longer presentation, so we thought we'd start with COVID metrics, which there aren't any. So there haven't been any since the last time we met, mainly due to shrinking data and changing how data is being delivered. And as we know, some of the data is just not as accurate as it once was because of home test kits. So so much has changed. So what we have been doing in the district is continuing to look at our local data. And this week, we haven't had any positive cases at our elementary schools. We've had just one positive case at our middle school. And at the start of the week, we had three positive cases at the high school, but they've, they're no longer positive. Our local numbers with communities, all of that is trending down. It continues to. In Barrington, there's one to four cases. That's true for Lee and Madbury as well. And Barrington has dropped to 12, and Dover, sorry, and Dover's dropped to 12, and Durham's dropped to 42. The data with UNH is syncing up a little bit better with our Durham data. So when Durham cases were reporting at 49, there were 47 UNH cases. So that's kind of showing a little bit. We can look into that a bit and say many of them are UNH, which is just helpful for our school data. What we are noticing with likely the removal of masks is not necessarily an uptick in COVID, but an uptick in just illness. We have a significant amount of kids who have been sick with flu-like symptoms, viruses, stomach bugs. Those have trended up. So, you know, having the masks on means there's not fingers in mouths and germs spreading and things like that. So, you know, it seems kind of natural and normal that kids and adults are going to get a little bit more sick, maybe, than they would have in the past, only because of, it's a significant change when you go take your mask off all at once. So our health staff is busy just kind of monitoring that. We do have to still quarantine people. We are seeing an uptick in kids being sent to school sick. So we're trying to work on that heavy messaging again. Kids coming to school with fevers. I threw up this morning. My mom said to give it a go, that kind of stuff. So we're still working on that messaging to make sure that kids still, COVID's not gone. They still have to have a negative test. So that's kind of where we're at health-wise. Everything else looks pretty good, though. Any questions?
Just an observation that goes along with everything you said, Catherine. The number of active cases in Stratford County is down by about 90% over the last six weeks.
Yeah. Yeah. And ICU hospitalizations are, obviously, the hospitals are in much better shape. So that's a positive sign for New Hampshire.
How's our supply of tests? Is it still?
We got good supply, so we still have a bunch of rapids. We have those ones that also, that we can send home for families. So if parents don't have access to tests, we can send home a kit that has two in it. We still have PCR tests right from UNH, so we can continue to do those. The supply with PCR tests has always been strong. We know families are continuing to reach out, like there was another push to, you know, families to submit for their government tests again. So you could get another two kits, which was four tests. So I know a lot of people are doing that. I'm not worried about our testing materials. Now that all the sites are closing, I wonder if we'll see a need. But with the availability of home test kits and insurance picking up those, I think many families are continuing to buy home test kits.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome.
You need to plug it in before you start it. Yeah.
Thank you very much. So this evening, we are finishing the last part in a three-part series about assessing and monitoring student growth. And Heather and Matt, in your packets, I asked Wendy to include the first two presentations for you and I'm happy to talk to you more about them if you have questions.
Okay.
The first part of the three-part series really was about academics. The second part focused on SEL and this part, we're going to talk about interventions. And so the goal this evening really is to give an overview of what tier two and tier three interventions look like, talk specifically about building levels, how, how it happens at the building level, and then to answer any questions that you may have about that. So just to kind of go back over MTSS and revisit what MTSS is, and David alluded to this earlier, but really we're talking about tiers of support for kids and interventions. So when we talk about MTSS, it's both MTSS and MTSSB, so multi-tiered systems of support. And we talked about the academic and then the behavioral also. And so those two things we know overlap. We know that they're very much interrelated, but we also can look at them separately as well. And if you look at the strategic plan, a lot of times you'll see them separated. However, we do work together at the school building level because we want to talk about both of those things. And when we're talking about tiers, the first tier really is universal, so it's something that all students are accessing. So that could be the curriculum, it could be programs. You're really talking about a wide variety of different things that kids are accessing as a collective. And this is for prevention, mostly for prevention, responses also. And then as we move to the second tier, we're getting to a, to a smaller group of students and when you're talking usually around 15%, give or take. And then tier three, you're really talking about a very small portion of the population. And these are for students that need interventions, specialized interventions. And we, this is where our interventionists are so very important to help. So when we're looking at some of the multi-tiered support systems that we have in place are, regardless of whether you're at the high school, middle school, or the elementary school, the way the system works. And then there are some that, some pieces of this that are very school-based because developmentally and the kids are different and because schools, the high schools organized in a very different way than an elementary school is organized. So what I'm going to do is just kind of go over sort of the broad overview of what MTSS looks like collectively. And then we're going to have different people from the building levels come in and talk, talk about what elementary school looks like, what middle school looks like, and what high school looks like. So regardless of the, regardless of the building, we have teams. MTSS teams meet regularly. Typically, they're weekly. Sometimes there may be, may be opportunities to meet more than weekly, depending on what the need is, but usually it's a weekly meeting. There are a variety of people sitting around that table. So you could have specialists, you could have the school site there, you could have counselors, teachers, interventionists themselves, you could have school building leaders. Again, it really depends. And depending on the level, you could have a grade, you could have a tier two, tier three at a grade level, or you could have at a building level. So grade level wouldn't really function well at the high school because, because of the way the high school functions, so that's more of a building level. So that's why they're going to talk specifically about that. And then how it actually works, and this kind of goes back to the previous presentations that, that I did, you really are looking at data. You're examining data that you've received. We've talked about different places where we get data. And then you're identifying students based on that information that you have and you're working with your system, your, your MTSS team to really figure out, okay, who are the students that might, we may need to support in a different way? And then we're going to say, okay, here are, here are the students. Now, we need more information to be able to really truly identify what those supports need. And we need to then identify the intervention, who's going to, who's going to participate with that intervention, who's going to be a part of that intervention, how we're going to build that into the child's day. And then, and so that's the implementation. And then you want to look at data again to see, is the implementation of these interventions successful? Do we need to adjust? Is the programming effective? Is, do we need to adjust that? And that's, again, a team approach where you have multiple people sitting around a table talking about, is this effective? Does it, is the data and the information that we have giving us the information that, making the change that we want to see? And a lot of that has to do with two pieces. It has to do with effective and accurate diagnosis of what the challenges may be and where the gaps may be. But it's really important to also talk about duration and intensity. So the goal with an intervention is to intervene and to shore up the gap so that kids can then exit. So amounts of time is going to vary depending on what the student need is and what the interventions are. And the kids could, some children may not necessarily need the intervention as long as others. And that's, that is just because of what that need is and the diagnosis is. So we really have to look at not only what it, what is the need, but what is the intervention we're putting into place? What is the intensity and the duration? And then also, how are we going to determine when the student is ready to exit the intervention? And so that's where you have that professional team that's so very, very important. And one of the things that I think really this system, the MTSS system speaks to Oyster River is that we have a really strong belief in the individualization and personalization of education for kids. And MTSS really bolsters that and really feeds into that because you're really looking at each individual child's need and how we can meet the child where they are and then move them to where, where their goals are. So at this time, I'm going to ask David to come up and talk a little bit about the K through four MTSS academic process.
Hi, Jim. The slide that you see in front of you is, I'll go through. It's sort of an example of the process that we might go through with a student. We chose reading for this example. This could be math, this could be a social, emotional learning need. But before we do, I just want to talk a little bit, as we go through this, you'll see that a lot of this process still has to do with tier one. It still has to do with the classroom teacher. Because tier two and tier three supports are different than just sort of like extra help. And as Suzanne showed you, with the 15% and then the 5%, the, these are for students who are at risk. They, they have a significant need that's greater than what a classroom teacher would normally support. Classroom teachers have a really wide array of strategies and skills and supports for the vast majority of learning needs. Very often when families, this happens at least at the elementary level, when we think of grade level, that concept, we think of a fixed point. I'm at grade level if I'm at this one point. But it's much more like the age at which children learn to walk or speak. There's, there's a much wider range. And the vast majority of children learn to walk or speak at a certain, in a certain band. And then there's a group who needs some help. And then there's a much smaller group that need a tremendous amount of help. And, and that's sort of how we think about this. So it's, it's a, it's a big deal to give a child tier two or tier three support. We take it very seriously. And it is meant, as Suzanne said, that we talk about this a lot, the point of the service is to get rid of the service. You want the student to get into the tier two support. You want to close the gap and have the child then be ready to just be back in the classroom, receiving all the normal supports that all the children get across that whole learning spectrum in the classroom. Does that make sense? As sort of a foundation. So here we go. We have a student of concern. That student of concern, that name could come up because of a parent concern. Most likely, it comes up because of a teacher concern. The teacher sees the child at the beginning of the school year. I've read with my child, my student, and I'm concerned. So maybe we've already done the STAR assessment in the fall, so we have that data. We do a reading benchmark. We always want three pieces of data if we possibly can. We don't want just one. I'm the teacher, I'm concerned about my student. So step two, I go to the reading specialist because this is a reading concern. The reading specialist talks to me about my data and we decide that there's some extra, we call them drill-down assessments, like fine-tuning the assessments to really look at what the issue might be. We're not just going to give the student generic reading help. We're going to give targeted help for the actual need, whether it be decoding or a comprehension issue, or at the very beginning, it might be short vowel sounds or, or letter recognition, something like that. But that other piece goes back to my sort of introduction, implications for tier one, because the student is still in the regular classroom and the classroom teacher still is teaching this child. And so there's a conversation with the reading specialist about, you know, as the classroom teacher, what extra things should I be doing? And we brainstorm together, bring all of our expertise to bear, and then I can go back and continue to teach and provide these supports in the classroom. And then as the classroom teacher, I'm going to do the third part in that box, which is called progress monitoring. I'm going to do a little, every two-week mini little assessment to see if the things I'm doing in tier one are helping the student. If the things I'm doing are helping in tier one, the student can stay in tier one. It's working. If it's not, we get to the third box, which is the conclusion of the progress monitoring. If it's working, then we just stay in tier one. We don't need tier two. And we put the child what we call on watch. So in those team time meetings that Suzanne was talking about, we would talk about students who we're watching because we're a little concerned, the work we've been doing is working, we want to make sure that they continue to grow. But if the progress monitoring shows that they really need additional intervention, then we put them in a tier two group. And then we go to box four, which is we have a tier two student. And a tier two student receives tier one instruction in the classroom and during another part of the reading block comes out of the classroom, leaves the classroom and works with a specialist, whether it be special education tutoring, any, the reading specialist herself. And that child gets progress monitoring every two weeks through that tier two process. And we have criteria for when we look at that progress monitoring, how we know when the child is ready to leave. And some students need just sort of one block of tier two. Let's say that's six, eight-ish weeks. Some students require two. Some students might need three, but we see that their gap continues to get closer and closer and closer to what we consider to be grade level. And over the course of their time in the elementary school, the goal is to have them stay only in tier one. And so that's, that's the basic process. And we could do that with math. You could substitute math in the math specialist. Now that the budget has passed, we're very excited to be able to hire an additional math specialist so that we have one in every building, just like we have reading specialists. We talked about that a lot during the budgeting process. That's going to help this process tremendously because right now, as we know, when we have a math concern, we're talking to a math coach who's in two buildings. And now both buildings will have one person to be able to really focus on all their students and to see students. So we're really excited for that change. Thank you to the voters and of course, all of you for making that happen. Any questions about that process? Denise?
Yeah, just in terms of what, so one with tier three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Great question. So the definition of tier two and tier three really has to do with how big the need is. The research shows that to close a gap, let's say if you're six months to nine, 10 months behind grade level, 30 minutes, four to five days a week will close that gap. And so that's tier two. It's a 30-minute intervention. Tier three is 45 minutes to an hour of an intervention. And so that just has to do with the size of the gap, Denise. The process is still the same. It just depends on, and of course, a tier two student could become a tier three student and a tier three student can definitely become a tier two student. That happens all the time. And tier two and tier three students can become tier one students again. But that's the, that's the difference. You see?
Go ahead.
What is the process, if any, for parent notification and communication through this process?
Yeah, that comes through the, the classroom teachers and that's part of the strategic plan and the process that we're, we're still working through. You know, at Moheramit, we began this process before the pandemic and we were working on the structures in our, in our school. How do we have the meetings? How do we set up and make sure that tutors and classroom teachers are all working together and understanding that? Throughout the whole process, we've communicated with parents individually about, you know, I'm concerned about David and I'm going to call his parents or his, his adults and let them know that I'm concerned and here's what we've done and we'll tell you how the progress monitoring goes. We have those kinds of conversations. But there's definitely more as a school that we can be doing formally to even just through these presentations and then through my communications and the school's communications, educate our whole community about the system that we have in, in the, in the building, in both buildings. And we're working through that process now, so.
Could I just remind the board members that it's being recorded and you really have to speak into the mic, otherwise it'll drive parents crazy at home.
Denise, you had another question?
I did, but go ahead, Matt.
Oh, go ahead. Matt?
In the first box there where it says student concern, you said that you look for three points of data. Is the parental concern one of those points of data or does that trigger?
That triggers a look for data. So the teacher concern and the parent concern would then give us the data. And the data could be quantitative, STAR assessments, benchmarks, things like that. And it could also be qualitative. I've read with the student and we've talked and I've heard what has happened and the parent has given us information about the concerns at home. And a lot of that conversation is really about providing context for the concern from the parents or the teacher. Because remember, a student can be, the student can have a need and still just be in tier one. And I don't say just, I mean, that's a great thing. Tier one is the classroom. They can still need additional support or a different kind of instruction and get that in tier one. And so sometimes that's the conversation that we have with both teachers and parents to say, yep, you know, David needs a little extra help and that can happen in tier one, but this student, you know, has a gap that really needs to get filled in tier two. Does that make sense? Denise?
My other question is about sort of the intersection with special education. And so, you know, how, how does, and I guess part of my question is if you have a child, say with an IEP for, say, you know, reading or something academic, and would they still, if they have behavior, some of the, I'm looking at the intervention examples with small groups, anxiety, different things like that. So they could still be MTSS or has that become part of their, you know, I guess their IEP? So I'm just kind of wondering how the two fit together.
But David, can you just defer to Catherine?
Do you want to talk, Catherine? Because I can talk.
Yeah, sure. So students who have an IEP have a specific amount of service time within that. If things adjust for them and we see a need for them, then it does become an IEP team meeting. It doesn't mean that if a student with a disability has another need, we can't still address it if it's not part of their disability or required for, if they need something supplemental, if they need a short burst of something, we certainly can do that. But if it is a, if it's, the data shows us it really is a need, we need to have an IEP team meeting and talk about what services. Because that comes with goals and objectives and specific tools for measurement that we need to track progress. But we also have, Moheramit has done a really great job with how we have some fluid groups where we're able to, we've been working really hard at training staff in a variety of interventions and tools. So we have some fluid groups. So we have been very creative with how we provide the instruction so that they may not always be with one adult all the time. There may be somebody else who's trained in it, the intervention they need, and we have some fluidity with that, which really helps for grouping and instruction. Yeah.
I had a related question, actually, Catherine. So would someone who has the IEP team support also be counted as a tier three student?
So yes, they could be a tier three student, but not all tier three students have an IEP.
That's, and that was my next question. Do we have a sense of the relationship between them in terms of how many students with 504s or IEPs are tier two or tier three? Or the converse, what percentage of tier two and tier three are receiving special education services?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have that data on me. I mean, typically, you know, it depends on the area. So you might be a student with an IEP that's tier three for reading, but you may need a short burst of math and so you might be tier two in that area. So the numbers, that's where that fluidity piece comes in with the, with the numbers and the groups. I would say that generally, students who are in tier three and cannot make progress in a specific amount of time, we then talk about, do they need a referral to special education at that point? So MTSS, which, the great part of it is it's not a wait-to-fail model. So the old model for special education was really a wait-to-fail model. What this does is if a student is struggling, the team has a discussion. What this does is if a student is struggling, the team has a discussion. We get interventions going. We look at their progress. We make a determination of, is this exactly what they needed to target this gap or target this deficit? Great. If not, and they're not making progress at an appropriate growth rate, because it all comes down to growth rate. You want them to be achieving growth at the same rate as their peers, even if they're still behind. Because if you don't have a growth rate that's strong enough, they're always going to be behind. So, you know, students who are in tier three, they're a concern. And so they're on heavy watch. Yeah, but I don't have those percentages on the top of my head. I would say there's more students likely who have IEP in tier three than not.
One of the great things to both of those questions that's happened through the work that we've done is the collaboration between special education and providers who are not special education. Historically, in a lot of schools around the country, those were split worlds. And they've really come together in tremendous ways over the past five years, really, through this process and share their expertise, share their support of students, help each other with brainstorming. So that's been a really terrific collaboration that's come through the process. Heather?
So for timing, how does it work if a student needs intervention in several different areas, say math reading and behavioral? How does that work timing wise with their school day?
Great question. We, for the vast majority of students who have services, even if they might have a tier two support for reading and a tier two support for math and even a tier two support for an SEL concern, they, they are in their classroom for their tier one instruction. They are, you know, everyone in class gets the tier one. That's the definition of tier one. So I'm the classroom teacher. I have all of my students receiving reading instruction from me. Then we break up into small groups. It's at that time when the student would leave to get the reading support. Same thing in math. I teach the math lesson to the entire class. And then once the students are then doing the practice work, students would either have service in the classroom with support for tier two or they might leave to get some additional support during the work time of math. There is a small group of students who have a really very robust wide range of services. And that's always an individual team conversation with parents about the number of services and how that impacts their day. But when we, as a team, decide that somebody needs a service, we're saying that's important, you know, that, and we then have a conversation to make the adjustments necessary for that child.
I had a second question. So we've been talking a lot about building level. How flat is this across the elementary schools within the district?
Oh, I'm presenting, I'm sorry, I should have said that. Misty can't be here tonight. I'm presenting for both of us. This is something that both schools have been working on, that we're both doing. We both have teams. We both have team meetings. We both have tier one, two, and three. We both have the collaboration between special education and tutors. That's happening in both, both buildings.
Yeah, so I'll be clear. So like, we talk about the grade level meetings. Moheramit has their grade level meetings and Masway has their grade level meetings. How much consists, I mean, the goal is the consistency, but how are we enforcing the consistency? So we don't have sort of building specific practices that are happening in Moheramit and Masway?
The facilitators of all of our team meetings, reading specialists, math coaches, principals, counselors, school psychologists, we meet as a facilitator group throughout the year to make sure that there is consistent practice, consistent philosophy, consistent work.
And we also, we also work with Marion Nice, who's a contracted service, and she works between all, all the buildings. And so she's been working with us on that consistency. And she'll continue to do that work with us. But coming back from the pandemic, it's almost like we need, this year, we're getting back into that consistency and making sure that we have all that. So yeah, so she's been very helpful with it as well.
And this slide just is some examples of what those tier interventions could be under MTSSA, the academics. Those are three examples of groups we might have for, for reading, decoding, you know, sounding out words, fluency, comprehension. And in math, number census, one that would be consistent K through four. And then the foundational skills would really just be skills from previous years that students need, have a big gap on and need to grow in. And then we have some examples of MTSSB strategy groups as well. Those groups come about as the need presents itself. So if there are students who are showing a need for a group on, you know, anxiety and how that's impacting their school day, that might be a group. Social problem solving, executive functioning, for example. Some students get support check, with check-ins and check-outs at the beginning and the end of the day to get themselves organized or prep for the day, review their expectations, things like that. And then tier three for MTSSB is really one-on-one work with the counselor or the school psych to address specific needs like that. And I'm going to turn this over now to the middle school. Is that right? Come on down. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, David.
Okay, for the third time tonight, Jay Rashad, the principal at the middle school. I'm here tonight, I'm very fortunate. I have my, I call them my most valuable players of the MTSS Bobcat time at the middle school. In terms of Bobcat time, that's when we provide our interventions to our students. Students meet in Bobcat daily. All students have a block of that. And tonight with me is Andrea Beneskevich, Director of Special Education. She's going to talk about MTSSA. And also Kim Felch, our counseling director as well. So talk about MTSSB. And I want to turn it right over to Andrea for the academic portion of MTSS.
I'm a little shorter. So MTSS at the middle school follows the same process or a very similar process as Masway and Moheramit. So we use the same visuals, so you could see the same process. But it just, there's, some of the details are a little bit different at the middle school level because students have more teachers, there's bigger teams. So I put an example of a sixth grade student, and I am going to focus on reading as well when I speak about this. So what we do is we sit down with the whole grade level or a whole team and we look at all of the star data. And we look at certain cutoff scores for 40th percentile or below in reading and math. And we have those teachers look at previous star data, so three data points at least in the past, to see if that data point is consistent over time. Then they would think about just their observations of the student and if that fits with the data. If that does, then we would recommend doing drill down assessments. So for reading, we use the Akadians. And that will help us determine if they have below benchmark in decoding, fluency, or comprehension. And so that helps us determine what intervention they need if they're going to tier, tier two. So if they are put in that skill-based Bobcat group, they would work on their area of need. So if it's reading fluency, they would meet several times a week and work on fluency for reading for a set number of weeks. And then that intervention teacher would progress monitor over time to ensure that they are making adequate progress. So we do this as full grade level or teams at the middle school, but we also have student-specific meetings where we talk in more detail about action steps needed. So, you know, a teacher or a parent can refer to that process. I know there was a question when David was up. Sometimes parents will reach out to me and I will explain the process and I will offer an MTSS meeting. And many times they are very thankful and they're appreciative of that. And then what I will do is convey the action steps of that meeting to the parent with any of the interventions or added adult support that we prescribe for the student. And then just, we meet, for the data teams, we try to do them at least quarterly. But then the student-specific meetings are happening as needed throughout the school year. Any questions about the academic? And then Kim's going to talk about the behavioral piece.
I have a similar question.
Yeah.
So if a student needs support in different areas, my data point is, you know, my daughter goes to Bobcat instrument one day a week and then the same Bobcat for the other four.
Yes.
How do, do they go to different Bobcats based on what they need support in? How does that timing balance?
Yeah, so for, we set certain, as a MTSS PLC, we set certain guidelines for all the teams, a certain number of days per week that their skill Bobcats will meet. The other days of the week, as you get older into the grades, they use those as competency recovery time. So for example, if a seventh grader was in a, a reading fluency group three days a week, on the other two days, they could go to their math teacher and work on competency recovery if they also struggled with math.
Thank you.
So with the MTSSB, which is the behavioral piece, we're really, just a reminder, it's really skills focused. It's not on mental illness, mental health. It's more of what skills our students in need around, with regard to social emotional learning. So the data we collect and look at in the same way that we do with academics is around attendance, our nurses, information from our nurses, our counseling information. I think last time I was here, I took our on-call system, which we track data based on students coming in and their frequency. And then also office referrals, discipline-related things. And then looking at our tier one, I'll give a quick example so you can kind of see what it looks for MTSSB. For example, our fifth graders coming in really were struggling with self-regulation. Right? We weren't surprised with that. So the counseling team went in and we hit them hard with some skills in our SEL lessons, which we do weekly with our fifth graders. And then through that, we then realized there was a small handful that needed a little bit of extra help with their self-regulation. So that would be our tier two. So then we would create some time with, working with the teachers and the intervention, intervention folks to look at Bobcat schedules or during snack time, or sometimes they might not have a world language and find a time to create a structured small group that's six to eight weeks that focuses on self-regulation skills. And then through that, we slowly start to identify maybe one or two students who might need even further intervention. And that would be individualized, one-on-one counseling. It could be a referral out, to outsource to mental health providers, clinicians. In some case, it could be collaborating with our, the pediatrician or our medication adjustments. And so really, that's that tier three level of intervention for the behavioral stuff. So that's, that's really when you look at the list of behavioral interventions, the groups are really that tier two piece. And then the individualized, the behavior contracts are more of that tier three when you're really looking at individual student needs after we've tried tier two interventions and they still are struggling with learning those skills. And then we kind of hit them a little bit harder. And then the other pieces are, we really work in really hard with our community providers to do a full wraparound. And so even with our tier three students that are not identified for, from the mental health pieces, we really are looking at getting releases signed, collaborating, creating plans that are supportive, both in and outside of school as best we can. Any questions on the behavioral part of MTSS?
I'm curious, Kim, in terms of your opening example with the fifth grade and how quickly, you know, you and your team intervened with the classroom teachers and created a skill set for those kids. Have you, did you see a major impact in, in terms of them acquiring those skills? Has it been successful?
It's interesting. And, and a couple of the fifth grade classes who've really been consistent in following through with some of the basic tier two or some of the classroom management suggestions have gone relatively well. And we see little bits of blips or escalation in behaviors, especially after a move from one school to the other. We definitely had to remind and reset and reteach a few skills. But we have, if we, we have one class who might be struggling a little bit and we go to a, we will have an MTSSB meeting and we'll have our school psych there. We'll have Andrea there, our assistant principal, Bill, there. And we will brainstorm, we'll think of positive behavioral supports to do at that tier one level. So the key to minimizing the impact for behavioral interventions is a robust tier one. So all students for MTSSB will have tier one, even if they're in tier two, tier three. And that's really that foundation is they know what's expected of them and they're all taught what's expected of them consistently and they're reminded and re-taught throughout the year. And then you start to positively reinforce the kids who are following those expectations so that it motivates and drives those kids. So sometimes we have to really put our thinking caps on and be creative because you might get a mix that's a little bit more challenging.
The reason I ask that question, Kim, for the public at home and just to remind the board that when we started the school year, we anticipated that the social, emotional behavior issues would be a bigger factor for us. And so, you know, K and one essentially were, they're treated the same. Five and six were treated the same and nine and 10 were treated the same because of COVID. And we did a lot of SEL work at the beginning of the school year, specifically to those grades. And then we've focused in academically mostly on grade two. As you might recall from the earlier presentation, that's where the data showed that COVID had the greatest impact in our district in terms of academics. So all, as Suzanne had said at the beginning, all of this overlaps. When you're doing a presentation like this, it all looks very clean and very orderly. But the reality is that professionals are constantly moving in and out of interventions to make sure our kids are supported. So thanks, Kim.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you and welcome you too.
Good evening, Rebecca Nowey. And I have our Assistant Director of Special Ed Melissa Jean with me tonight. So first, I wanted to give a little example of what our tier one would be. And so this year, behaviors have been mentioned a little bit already. We knew our ninth graders and our 10th graders would be really more similar to each other. And so we did some, some interventions earlier in the year. But one that recently came up was cell phones. And so what happened was earlier in the year, I think Brian, you had asked about.
Nowey, could you bring that closer to your mouth?
Yes, I'm a little taller, not much.
We'll tell.
Sorry. So with cell phones, we had talked about teachers trying to use strategies in the classrooms. I mentioned that. And we weren't getting as many referrals down to our APs. And so really, and now in this third quarter, we had come up with cellphone use. And while teachers have been trying to do that, taking care of it in the classroom, kids were really using cell phones a lot more. And what we discovered through looking at this is before COVID, cell phones weren't so much of an issue. Kids used them, they had to tell them to put away sometimes. And then through COVID and being remote and being on their phone whenever they wanted to, being behind a screen with their camera off, we're finding that in the classroom, this is something that you just can't get away from. And so in one of our tier one meetings, some of the teachers had been reported a little bit. Those were going up. Some teachers were talking about what they were seeing in the classroom. So we really dove into that a little deeper and they came up with a program to do through advisory in addressing this. And really, it was talking to kids and having discussion questions. Why are you on your phone so much? What are you doing on your phone? How are you using that? When you use it in the classroom and someone is teaching or talking to you, what do you, what do you think about that interaction? So it's having those smaller conversations in our advisory community. But then it's also going over, what are the policies in the school? Why can't a teacher ask you to put your phone away? And so through that, we've kept those conversations ongoing. But that's just an example of like a tier one for all students in the building. And so now Melissa's going to walk you through an example of our tier two, three.
Hello. So at the high school, we operate, tier two, three operates, the MTSS academic portion and the behavior portion, we work together on that. So I'm going to walk through an example of a student that the tier two, three team worked with, starting from the beginning, so identifying the student. So this student in particular, we'll call Pat, had some poor grades. We had some information from teachers that said things weren't going so well. We had the parent communicating with the counseling department with concerns. And so that, that student's name came to the tier two, three team. And our drill down process, at least in this case, was looking into like the Power School data. Why is the student's grades poor? And with this student in particular, you know, he had a lot of missing assignments. The assignments that he did do, they, they looked good. So we weren't concerned about academic skills, but more like why, why is the student not turning in work? And, and also the teacher comments were, you know, the student's disorganized. He's not coming to class with the materials he needs. And so for the student, we determined that an appropriate intervention would be to have the student. the student participate in an executive functioning skills group. So moving on to step three there, the student enters that group, which is a six-week program of direct teaching. And the student takes a pre-assessment and a post-assessment to measure their own growth. But also, we send an assessment to the teachers so that they can take a pre-assessment and post-assessment for the student. So at the end of the intervention, tier two, three team looks at the student data. Again, we look at grades, look at the assessments. And for this student, you know, we saw measurable growth and the student was doing well, so he went to monitor status so we can keep an eye on that student. So that's, that's one example of a student we work with.
And these are just other examples of different types of interventions that we have. So the executive functioning skills group is what Melissa talked about. We might have coaching, which would be one-on-one meetings with a student over a period of time. So it might be six to eight weeks where, I could take myself as an example, so maybe once a week I'm meeting with that student, we're sitting down, we're going over what kinds of assignments they have, we're going through their backpack and making sure they have everything and practicing those skills that they had in the executive functioning groups. That'd be like a tier three. The math lab, we do have that as a drop-in, but we also have students that can be assigned to the math lab. The writing center is new this year. Right now, it is a drop-in, but now it can go on with budget passing, so thank you. And we're looking at that becoming a place for writing intervention that people can be assigned to also. And then we have our learning lab. And that is the center where kids can be assigned to, where really they focus on executive functioning skills, advocacy, you know, how do you go talk to a teacher when you have a question about an assignment? There are some kids who just are nervous about it or scared about that. And this is a place where they can practice what they want to say and then, or she can go with them to the classroom. So those types of skills. For MTSS behavioral health, we have connections, which is a block in the day. And that is a place for kiddos who might have social emotional issues, things that they, they just need a place that they can come, have someone who's on their side, talk about those things, and then get into the work that they're doing. But it is a block in their day that they're scheduled. Weekly counseling with one of our school psychologists, check-in, check-out. And I think it was David that mentioned that. So that's in the morning and then in the afternoon, when they first get to school and they leave, they have an adult, they check in and then check out with, how are you doing this morning? Do you need anything? Do you have everything you need? How did your day go? You know, is there anything you had to work on tonight? And build that relationship within the school. The stress management group, that's something being worked on right now. That would be a group that we do as needed and it would be a small group. Our school psychologists came up with that curriculum and so that will be implemented. And then group counseling is done by community partners and our check and connect. Any questions?
If, when would a group, for example, the executive functioning group, when would that meet?
Now, we have the team meeting, or the group meeting on, during flex.
Oh, flex, okay.
What's check-in and connect?
Check-in and connect is a little bit more, it is more intensive than check-in, check-out. So it's somebody meeting with a student regularly, they're looking over their grades, they're very much like a case manager, you know, connecting the student to teachers, helping them advocate for themselves, having that parent, that homeschool connection, bridging that gap. So somebody who's really coordinating those efforts. Thank you.
So I hope that's given you some information about the tiers of support, what it looks like at the different levels and how that, how that's actually implemented. And we, we will be, I don't know if anyone has any questions at all sort of at the, at the end here about how it just functions throughout the district. I know that Heather, you had asked that question about consistency. That's something that we continue to work on and we have, we do have a contracted service provider that has been working with the district for many years and we will continue to work with her and also to have those meetings with cross, cross-division meetings with many people to ensure that there's some consistency there.
UC? When students transition, particularly transitioning between schools, how does that work within the MTSS system?
So transitioning between schools, there are always meetings that happen at the end of the year to, to work to transition students. So teachers will meet, case managers meet. Now that we have our interventionists, I'm sure that there, we will provide some time for them to meet as well. And so we do have transition meetings that occur as kids move between buildings. And one of the things that's so wonderful about the size of the district is that it's very easy for teachers to connect with each other and for counselors to connect with each other. It's, and so we're really fortunate because of that. So those conversations can continue if there are questions. I know when I was a principal, I'd call Jay all the time and say, hey, let's talk about this student, I have some concerns. And he would, he would give me information that he had, so.
Thee is, systems for a flexible and individualized approach, it's great to learn more about. I'm curious how this approach applies to students at the other end of the academic scale that might be doing incredibly well and be needing additional challenges. We've talked about this in previous meetings too, but it seems the, an MTSS style where students are flagged and groups come together to think of how to challenge them would, would also be appropriated. Is that a, an analogy that the team talks about or that, that's applicable to those types of students as well?
We can, we can look at that as far as, it wouldn't be part of MTSS necessarily for the tiers of support because it is a tier, tier of support. But as far as extensions are concerned and how teachers stretch student learning and understanding and really challenge them with higher order of thinking, a lot of times when we're looking at something like that, where we're trying to stretch students beyond where they are, we're really looking at higher order of thinking. And we're really looking at, you know, analysis and prediction and some of those other pieces in different areas, problem solving, those types of things. And so teachers tend to do that within the classroom to be able to stretch that learning. But if that's something that you're interested in learning more about, we can talk, talk more about that in the future, how that, how that's happening. Did you want to say, Catherine?
Just add into that. So we do, we have started to address some of that. So the Bobcat groups that exist at the middle school is a good example of that. So when we look at the student data, we look at all the student data. The teams of teachers are looking at it as a whole and they're identifying other needs. And so those Bobcat group, that time is really, we used to call it what, when, I think, Jay called it, like, you know, what, what I need. And so students were getting their needs met differently. Also during our tier one instruction time, when it comes time to individualized groups or targeted groups, there are still groups of students who are doing some more challenging activities when some of their peers are off. So that has started, our goal and our focus is really addressing the students who are behind, but it is part of the system and has been part of the system in Oyster River for years.
So we've done, you know, we have people within, at every level that work to work with students. So someone like Ruth Galing works with math students at the middle school with students that are looking for additional challenges. And so there are people within the building levels that, that have done that in the past of, so, yeah.
I would just want the board to know that what you just heard sounds like a program that is perfectly in place and all the bells and whistles are working. I want really to emphasize that this is an evolving program. This program started only five years ago and it's pretty amazing, the work that our staff has put in to bring it to this, this point. We continue to improve and we continue to refine this program. Interventions aren't set in stone. You know, clever people can think of new ways to assist students in their growth. And so the examples tonight are examples we use, but there are also, this program is designed to grow and evolve with the needs of students.
And I, and I just want to reiterate too, that this is really at the building level. This is, you know, these are the teachers that are, are working really hard with the interventionists and, and as Catherine mentioned and David mentioned, and even just having Andrea and Melissa here, you can see how seamless it is. Everyone's working together where it's reg ed or special ed or, you know, it does take, it is truly a team approach. And so without, without everybody participating on that, we wouldn't be able to have such a robust MTSS system and so much dedication. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, just before we leave my section, we had done the two pieces there. I just want, when we get down to the committee assignments, I'd like for you to consider possibly restarting the world language committee and, and looking for board participation in that. And we're coming up on a very short deadline in terms of the DEIJ coordinator position. And I would like at least two people from the committee to be part of that process as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Business administrator.
Can I just ask if we can have Josh do his piece first? Is it okay? Can Josh go first with the E-Rate bid, please?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
You can adjust the microphone.
Hello. Check one, check two. We good, Alexander? All right.
Two thumbs up.
You should have in your packet a short memo on the E-Rate bid and just a quick overview. It's the process, the federal government has a program in place. It was established in the late 90s to get internet into schools. So it is a program that we go through when we need to purchase internet service. So every few years, I come to you with the bids. And so this year is a year for internet. And so that's what this bid is. It's a competitive bidding process that goes out across the entire country and anyone can respond. And so these are our responses. We looked at what we have, what our current consumption is and also trying to plan out the next three years. And so that's, that's what went into making a decision on this.
So this requires a motion, Michael.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from First Light for the internet connection in the amount of $26,100.
Second from Brian. Any discussion or questions for board?
Yes.
I just was curious, what is the current consumption?
So what we do, now that every student has a device, is we actually utilize two connections and we load balance between them. And that way, two separate providers, so UNH is one of them and this one is UNH, this one is First Light. And so we're probably around, we're bumping up and hitting about 800 megabytes. So with this, we're going to have a total of two gigabytes. So it's going to give us plenty of room for growth. I'm actually a little surprised we haven't seen more, but I think now that kids are back in person, we've probably drawn back on technology use a little bit and not relying on it as much. But with the two connections, I'm pretty confident we'll be good to go forward. All our equipment is rated, we did that last year and I think we're rated for up to five gigabits. And one of the benefits of keeping, having UNH is it's not a typical company where we would have to sign an agreement if we wanted more bandwidth. UNH has been very good. If we're in the middle of testing and seeing issues, they'll just go turn us up. So we have that flexibility, which actually we're probably the only school district in the state who has that flexibility, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? All those in favor of approving the E-Rate bid for First Light for internet? Please raise your hands. Seven in favor and the student rep in favor.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. I just have the MS-22, which is the form that I need to file with the Department of Revenue after the vote. So the budget passed and this form just reflects all of the numbers from the warrants. And on here, you'll see your name. Please sign next to your name. And that's all I have. Questions? You have it in your packet.
Need a motion first.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Brian?
Motion to accept the MS-22 as presented.
We have a motion from Brian, a second from UC. Any discussion, questions for Sue? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Great, thank you.
Approve the MS-22. All right. And Jim?
Good evening, Jim Rosicky, facilities director, Oyster River Schools. Come before you this evening for, get your final approval on two long and exciting projects in the works that are capital, that have been on the plan for a while. First one is the, the final phase of the high school site and grounds improvements, which consisted of first phase being the parking lot. Now we're doing the, actually building of the tennis courts on the existing, I believe what they call the lower junior lot, right to the left of this window here. So I know I provided a summary. I'll just give a very quick summary of the summary. And just for people to understand a little bit about the project because it kind of complicated a little bit, the way that we went about doing, or people may not understand quite clearly how we went about just the parking lot side. So it consists of two different proposals. One is, there's no, not many contractors that do a complete turnkey project. There is always a site contractor involved that preps the site to the final grade. Tennis company then comes in, separate contractor, puts the final pavement on, the tennis court surface, does the nets and the stanchions and the fencing and the lighting and all that finished stuff. So that's the, that's the breakdown between the two proposals that I'm, I would like to seek approval on. So my request is for the site work for McKenna Construction, this will be, excuse me, this will be McKenna's fifth project with us in the district. A preferred vendor and everything that he's touched so far has been successful. I would like to seek your recommendation for approval for $242,000 for site work for him. And also, we, the tennis court companies that we sought bids from, it was a very long process throughout the fall and the nature of the industry right now made it a challenge to get bids and responses and for them to provide an actual number because of the extreme price fluctuations, especially with fencing. So we did receive two proposals, one from Vermont Tennis and Track and the other one from Lineberry Tennis. And that is my recommendation and my ask of the board is for, we, us to award the contract to Vermont Tennis and the amount of $241,380. Any questions on the project?
Motion first, Jim, so we can get it on the table.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from McKenna Construction for $242,000 for the site work and for Vermont Tennis for $241,380 for the paving the court and court finishing.
We have a motion from Denise, second from Brian. Questions or discussion? What's the construction schedule look like?
Construction schedule, the site work would begin right after the final exams, which is mid-June. And we don't have a firm date on the tennis court company starting, but we, they want to be done by the first week of September, if not the second.
Any, the, the court portion came in considerably less than we were concerned it might be? Any speculation as to what was different there?
Actually, yes. Again, another longer story, which I'll make very, very short. The original proposal or the original estimate that we received back in June, that was kind of in the heat of COVID, a lot of the uncertainty in the market, labor rates were crazy, the cost of metal and supplies and materials was, was very volatile at that time. So again, that was just one contractor's best guess at what a project would be like a year later. And I think a lot of contractors gave that same advice, is just highly escalated that number, just to be on the safe side. But it, I could only guess that it didn't go up as much as they thought.
And I think this is more a question for Sue, probably. We had planned to fund part of this by taking money from Reserve Fund? No?
Yeah. I think if the cost exceeded what we had in the budget, we would consider going to the-
So we, okay. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the tennis contracts? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next one has been on our capital improvement plan for years. This was a project that was identified by the Davis-Goudreau study that was done so many years back, and it's to replace the three ceiling air handling units over at Mohairat. They are original to the building, and it is overdue. Luckily, we have them maintained. They still work, but we are, our engineer has specked out very good units that exchange more air, that have energy-saving measures, and a higher filtration system for better building ventilation at Mohairat. So again, we did a public bid for this because, again, we were uncertainly with the volatility of the market. We wanted more competitors. But as you could see, that was a lot less than what I expected. I think one thing, because I probably asked this, I think one thing that steered other contractors away from bidding on it is because mechanical equipment lead times can be up to 30 weeks at this point. And I think contractors just see that and say, no, I can't meet that deadline. So luckily, we've worked with ENE, the company that I'm putting before you for the bid recommendation, has been doing work for us for the past two years, and they're almost done with our third-floor AC project here at the high school. Been an excellent to work with. Not only was their price low, I know they do a great job and they communicate well. So I recommend ENE Systems for $78,950, based on price and vendor preference.
Brian?
I make a motion to accept the bid from ENE for $78,950 for the Mohairat air handler unit replacements.
We have a motion from Brian. Second from Heather. Any discussion, questions for Jim? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The ENE contract is approved.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Sue? All right. Student representative report. Olivia?
Hi. Welcome, everybody new. For tonight, I don't have too much, just a few things. This Thursday night is going to be the Bestie Bays and Bros, which is a game show type event, which is hosted by the junior class. It's going to be at 7:00 PM, and I believe a $5 entrance fee, which goes to support the junior class. And if you're curious, it is like a fun game show style event, where like friends, significant others, and siblings participate on being quizzed on the other to test their knowledge and stuff. And there was like signups previously, if you were interested in doing that. And then a few events being planned for the spring. The seniors are having a mattress fundraiser, so if you need a new mattress, on April 3rd, you can come in to the NPR where there will be a setup thing, where you can buy a mattress. But not only that, they also will have things such as like pillows, pillow toppers, that sort of thing. And then the Senate is also working on planning some events for the end of the year slash spring. And other news, the senior corps was opened last Friday, which was super exciting. I got a lot of great feedback from my peers about, like, just being happy overall about that being open. So thank you to Ms. Noe for making that possible, and everybody else. And it's, the main thing that I heard from everybody was that they were happy that it was opening because it was a great step, like, going forward and moving on to getting back to how things typically were, you know, previously. I also want to congratulate those who went to the National Indoor Track Meet, like Ms. Noe said. That's a super big deal, so congratulations on that. And the overall feedback that I've just been like hearing around from my peers, teachers, is just like joy over just like the steps forward to going back to how things used to be and stuff. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do, Olivia. I am curious as to how the fundraiser went with the Krispy Kreme doughnut.
I was going to ask the exact same thing.
So we ended up selling all but six boxes, so we, it was, went super successful. Thank you to everybody who bought a box and went out and voted. Yeah, so.
So I think we need to ask Ms. Noe, so that it can be recorded in the record. What time did you get up and drive to Connecticut?
Oh, wow. All the way to Connecticut. Oh, my goodness.
1:30 in the morning.
1:30 in the morning. And how many boxes did you pick up, Ms. Noe?
300.
Oh, my goodness.
How long did your car smell for?
It smelled really good, for a whole day.
And who was the first customer, Ms. Noe?
Oh, I think I was.
Oh, yeah. You can't be the customer, you would be the deliverer.
No, no. Well, I don't know, they might have had a customer before me, but I went in and got my checkbook. I didn't realize they weren't going to take cars.
I was right behind.
But no, I'm actually gluten-free, so I can't eat them. So I, yes, I take some home to my husband and kids.
People were thrilled. It was such a great fundraiser. And I think, you know, when I arrived there and the kids were outside and they were just shivering, you know, looked like a mountain of doughnuts, I said, guys, you can do this inside, they'll welcome you. No, we'll stay here. I just think they were intimidated by the voting and they didn't want to go inside the building. But it was just a joy. It was a great fundraiser and very, you know, in front where everybody could see it, and I'm so glad it was successful.
Yeah, me too. It's for Senior Week, and so it's really for a good cause, and for them to be able to do a lot of the activities they're really looking forward to and get back to normal as quickly as possible. So it's worth it. Thank you.
So is the event tomorrow night open to the public?
I don't have a lot of details on it because I wasn't involved in planning it, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
Rebecca, is the event tomorrow open to the public?
Or is it just a student?
So I think it's just students.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Sorry. Anybody else?
All right. Thank you, Olivia. There is no Finance Committee report tonight. The unanimous consent agenda is next. Just a reminder, this is items that may not require any discussion or explanation at the meeting. There are backup materials provided in the packet for this week. If anybody would like to pull any of these out of the unanimous consent agenda to be discussed when we get to discussion and action items, you may do so. So are there any of these that we want to pull out for discussion? All right. So hearing none, I will move approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes a motion to nominate and approve the continuing contract professional staff members as submitted by the superintendent for all buildings, and to approve the maternity leave of absence from May 31st, 2022, to the end of the school year, and a one-year leave of absence for the 2223 school year at the high school, and for approval, a second read and approval of policy GEA hiring of coaches. Is there a second? Brian? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The unanimous consent agenda is approved.
Can I just slide in behind that, Michael, and say that because this was being approved tonight in your packet, I was informing you of the recommendations from Andy to me that I've approved for coaching. So that's our first informational piece related to the new policy.
Did we miss this item that was in our folders?
I want to know what it is.
Yeah. Let me go back. Mind if I go back to it?
Please.
Yeah. So we had artist submissions, so if you can visualize the Learning Commons, and at each end, there's basically a blank section of wall above our eye level. And so we asked for submissions of artwork. We had five different submissions. The submissions were reviewed by our middle school art teachers, myself, and our two architects. And the piece that's in your packet is an example of the submission that this artist made. They made one based on the themes of the building, water, rivers, oceans. They made one based on mountains and woods. And so we thought that was incredibly clever, very graphic, which is something middle school kids, you know, would appeal to them visually. And so we're in conversations about some modifications. We weren't really keen on the dragon's tail, the fish tail popping up. And so we're sitting with the artist and making some minor modifications before they start. Now, interestingly, the second-place artist took a completely different approach, and some of you familiar with the old school, the base of the stairs, Jay had positive inspirational statements that students could read as they're going through the building. And so we were asking the artist to also consider these particular inspirational sayings. And a second artist just went down that path, and they were pretty doggone amazing. So we've asked that artist for a second submission related to how we could incorporate those graphics into the stairwells. So complementing the mountain, river, ocean, woods theme, but having these inspirational sayings be in the stairwells where the kids are going all day long. And so we're excited about that potential opportunity and looking forward to another submission from a different artist. But the artists really were pretty, they were really great. We had a very lengthy discussion. I felt bad for Jay because he was in the meeting, and of course, I have an art background, the architects have, and we have the art teachers. So we're doing positive negative spaces, we're doing images, and I thought, hey, Jay, what do you think of these? Because he was really the only person that didn't have, you know, the technical skill, but he had the observer skill. And fortunately, he liked the same ones we did. So it was fun, but I realized late in the conversation, poor Jay was probably bored to tears. So I think we got some really exciting images to add, and those will be up by the time school opens in the fall.
Denise?
So just, well, one is a comment and then a question. I like the colors that complement, they're, you know, the same color, so that's really pretty cool. But is this, so is this artist going, is this like, are they getting paid? Is this a volunteer thing?
Yeah. The budget for the school included $25,000 for artwork.
Okay.
Yep. And the one based on images will probably come from contingency, and we have, we're doing really well on contingency, so I just wanted to spruce up the building with some pretty classy art, and I think it's, you know, the artist did a really great job.
All right, thanks. So now, now moving to the committee, the committee assignment request. So you have in the packet a list of the current committee, the previous committee assignments for the board year that just ended. What I think would be helpful to do is to just have one person from each of these groups give a very brief overview of what that group does. And then what I'd like to ask is that each board member communicate your preferences for committee work to Wendy by March 25th, which is a week and a half from today, or we can, it's nine days from today. And that will give us a chance, Denise and Jim and I, a chance to take a look at those and make a recommendation to the full board at our first meeting in April for committee assignments. This is a list of the committees as they exist today and the other groups that we have delegation to today. I would ask the board to consider, you know, a little bit down the road in the, say, the June-ish timeframe, May-June timeframe, taking a look at our committee structure and redefining the relationship of the board and the committees, and our policy around committees, just to make it crystal clear what the relationship is between the board and each of these groups, whether it's a subcommittee of the board, like the first three, or whether it's another group either inside or outside of the district, as the case of the lower set there. So, does that sound okay? All right. So Denise, you want to give us a quick overview of the policy committee's work?
Right. So policy committee, we basically ask policies, you know, sort of come up for review. And in terms of which policies are reviewed, sometimes it's, you know, law changes and a policy, you know, it's a required policy that we need to look at. Sometimes it's just something that has come up in discussion, you know, we want to look at that particular policy, change something about it. A good example of that is the coach, the hiring of coaches, that is an example of that. And then sometimes it's just, you know, Dr. Morris just kind of going through our policies, and Wendy, and, you know, these policies haven't been reviewed for a really long time, so there's a rotation in there as well. Policy committee meets once a month. We have been meeting at 3:30 in the afternoon, and as far as the day, that has varied a little bit. We've sometimes met on Wednesdays, I think we've sometimes gone to Thursdays, but generally speaking, it's a monthly meeting, and it's for generally an hour, an hour and a half. And then the committee looks at the policies to be, you know, revised. We kind of go through, you know, figure out what changes, and then we bring it to the full board for first read. The full board has input in terms of additional changes, and then it comes back to the board for a second read and adoption. I think I got, oh, and there's a number, there's three board members that sit on policy committee.
I would add that the policy, the policies that are in the manual really are the board's will. So in between meetings, if an administrator is dealing with an issue, and we can look at a policy and make sure that we're following the collective will of the board and therefore the district. So policies are really critically important to management.
All right. And Finance Committee, do you want to?
Sure. It's the most exciting committee that the board has to offer, mainly because of the personalities that are on it. But really, really our busy time of the year for finance is during budget season. What we try to do is get through all the weeds, because what used to happen is we'd spend hours upon hours upon hours discussing a budget here at a meeting until it's midnight, and finally got fed up with that. So we decided a finance and budget committee where we kind of get through the weeds and make, you know, kind of put everything into a nice package and make a recommendation to where we should go. You know, when we meet is really based upon demand. You know, if we have a big fund balance into the year, we may meet to kind of see where the best way to spend that money, what goes where, and we make a recommendation, you all vote on it. So, you know, we don't have any ability to make a decision, it's always a board decision. It's just that, you know, we try to weave through it all and help, you know, overlook, you know, look at some of the things that are going on to make sure that we're on track. So it's, am I forgetting anything?
I think that the other issue that I would say in finance is that prior to the creation of this committee, two, maybe three years ago, everything was truncated into this intense time period between October and March. And what we've done as a committee is really started meeting in the spring so we can lay out the foundations for the board. And it's been incredibly invaluable, I think, and incredibly successful to the last two budget processes where we had really tough issues to deal with, and we took time to deal with them instead of trying to squeeze them into a very short number of months.
It's always with, we meet as a, the three of us, plus Jim and Sue Caswell, when we do meets, generally at night, I think, because that's really, me and your schedule is really what it comes down to. So it's usually, I think, around 6:00, 7:00 at night, something like that. So it's not, you know, we have a busy season, and like right now, we're in our slow season. So although we may meet soon to get you guys both up to speed on the budget or something like that, you know, or just go over our process, so.
Brian, I can't remember. How often during the peak sort of November through December timeframe does the Finance Committee meet?
We were up to every other week at one point, weren't we?
Yeah, we, from October and November, we met.
I couldn't remember if it was weekly, so every other week is looking pretty good.
Well, in between, you got the board meetings.
Yeah, we met at least alternate weeks.
We would alternate with the board meetings, so basically, we were seeing each other every week.
So the intensity during that time is still there, but we've built the foundation before we get to that intense time, so it's been less onerous on the entire board and less work overload.
Made it more efficient.
Much more efficient and more thoughtful.
And so those two committees really are the board working on core. And so those two committees, um, really are the board working on core responsibilities of the board, um, between policy and, and budget. Dan, do you want to give us the overview of negotiations?
Sure. Um, so negotiations committee, um, we generally get some board direction, um, prior to opening negotiations with, uh, the bargaining units. I would say typically, uh, Dr. Morse facilitates the discussion. Um, one thing that I've come to really appreciate being on negotiations committee for a number of years is, um, the truly collaborative, uh, approach that, um, you know, Dr. Morse and the leaders of the negotiation units have forged. Um, you know, it is, it is not, has not ever been, uh, a sort of adversarial, uh, relationship and approach. It's really, um, just sort of a, you know, very respectful, um, collaborative process. And, um, you know, that we're back on a cycle now. We had a very intensive, uh, year this year, um, because we had sort of gone out of cycle due to a lot of the pressures of COVID. Uh, we've reestablished our normal cycle, so we'll only be meeting with, um, a couple of units on any given year. Um, it's a great way to, um, get to know the different, um, groups that work in the district, um, get to know their leaders, uh, and get to know their concerns. And that's, uh, that's a really key, I find a really key part of the process is, um, because there's just that comfort and exchange candidly, um, you get to hear some just very frank, uh, expression of concerns and, and priorities from the groups. And I, I just find it really helpful. So if anyone's interested in that, I think you'll find it, um, uh, pretty useful in that way.
I would describe it too as how the sausage is made, although not in a bad way, but it is stuff that's behind the scenes and you get to, you get to learn a lot about the inner workings of the district through that, that are actually really interesting. So.
I don't believe we have any collective bargaining agreements that are up for, oh, am I wrong about that?
One of the great things that the negotiating team did was we, when putting ourselves back in cycle, we've taken all the pressure off for the next couple of years anyway.
Yeah.
So if you're looking for a committee where you want to be on, there's not a lot to do, it would be negotiations.
I, you know, granted that there aren't any anticipated new agreements or renegotiated agreements this year, I do think we should have a fully staffed, um, negotiations committee because things do come up over the course of the year that are not expected.
Yeah, even though we don't, uh, we're not negotiating actively with the guild, um, periodically issues come up and negotiating team is invaluable to me at that point. So.
All right. And then representatives of other groups, the, the top line there is the manifest, which I think we didn't include last time, um, in this formally, but, but I, I'm glad that it was, it's showing up here now that our policy requires that the payment manifest, so before, before checks can go out on behalf of the district, that two board members authorize that, review and authorize that. So, um, those two members usually meet before.
Can I just ask, shouldn't that be a public meeting group?
Well, it's not a meeting, uh, because oftentimes you're not actually discussing anything. You're, you're reviewing the documentation and signing it.
But it is a public.
Well, there's no, there's no agenda either.
There's, yeah.
Okay.
You don't even have to meet, right? You can go in and, and just review the manifests.
That's, that's been done.
And sign it. And that's something that the board has discussed from time to time, how that process works, but that's the way it is in our current policy. Um, so, and I, I think I asked last time that the existing manifest committee, which is Denise and Dan, um, continue on through the, the March 30th and then we'll, we'll, uh, appoint new members next time.
And, and I will add that it's for not the full year. Normally it's for six months. We usually split up, split it up. So we have one that basically goes from like March to like October or whatever. And then the other one that goes from October to the, you know, February, March timeframe, basically. So, and think about it, it's real exciting. Actually, it actually, I, it's, I find it very interesting because you really get to see the nuts and bolts of where the money goes. So I think, I think it's really good.
Technology committee, has the technology committee met this year?
I've been on this, I think, two years and I've yet to have a meeting, so.
They haven't invited you anyway?
No, no. They must've lost my email or something.
So, so that's one, um, that's one of your committees, Jim, and I think it's worth reviewing if we want to continue that or not.
Isn't, um, you know, based on the work where we are in the district, it really isn't a committee that necessarily needs to exist anymore. I think that goes back 10 years when we were laying out plans and so forth. And, you know, the work that we've done in the district has been monumental and Josh has been terrific at it. So I don't think it's necessary anymore.
Um, and Jim, can you talk about wellness a little bit?
Yeah. So, um, this is a committee that has met pretty regularly. The, um, it's a, a teacher-driven committee and they have broken down their work into health and, and, uh, focused in on grownups. They've also focused in on how to more efficiently use our healthcare system. There's a lot of, there's a lot of complexity to it and so that's been something that Sue has led. So is there a third component? It's the professional wellness and it's the health insurance. And was there a third piece? Seems in my mind there was a third.
Would be food service or?
Well, I think the one component that the board rep was on was one that Todd had instituted and we started talking about creative ways to better utilize our benefits. So it was more of an employee-focused one and that Al or?
Yeah, that was the one I was referring to.
I think Al was part of that, yeah.
Suzanne, is there?
Then there's the wellness committee in each of the schools, but those are with the nurses. That's a different committee.
And then we have, um, we have a, we have a policy. We have a policy, well, so the wellness committee has the three, has three branches and one of those is the policies where we review the policies, we go over the policies and talk about how we push that information out, um, to ensure that we're following them.
That committee meets about once a month?
Um, so as a full committee group, that it's quarterly, but then there's individual smaller pieces within, within the group and those meet periodically.
The board member in this case has been a participant on the broader group. So it's a quarterly commitment.
And this is, I believe this is a committee that is, we're required to have by, by state law.
Yes.
And it is focused on, on staff wellness, employee wellness in this case.
Yeah. And it's also the committee that helped us, um, engage the staff, both professional and support staff and the SOS insurance plan, which has been incredibly, uh, cost-effective for our employees and for us. So if this committee hadn't existed, that we would likely not have gone down that path.
Teresa participates on the committee as well and works with us.
Our HR coordinator is incredible at this, on this committee and our nurses are incredible on this committee. So it's a quarterly commitment from board members.
All right. Since we no longer have a member who was on sustainability, can you talk about that one too, Jim?
Do you want me to do sustainability?
Yeah, yeah.
I attended the last two also, but Sue.
Yeah. Sue is, Sue is the lead on this and it's a committee, you know, interestingly enough, this is a conversation I had with Yusi this morning. It's a committee that was generated by the community. It really never was a superintendent committee and it never was a board committee. It was a committee that, um, was a passion of the, of, of towns members who were working in their communities. They wanted to create a committee in the school, school system. So it is a, um, it is a longstanding commitment of people who just really were committed to figuring out how to do things environmentally friendly. And, you know, the, I would have to say that the fact that the middle school, one of the pillars of the middle school is sustainability is because this committee existed for so long and their commitment by, uh, from each town has, has been strong. Um, Sue, do you want to bring us up to speed on where the work is right now?
So one of the things we don't have is we don't have a coordinator in Maggie. So that's kind of where Suzanne and I have kind of taken over the role of leading this sustainability committee. So as soon as we have a board rep, Suzanne and I just talked, we're going to have a meeting and we're going to have it at the new middle school, give everyone a tour of the new middle school, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the solar panel and talk about next steps.
And you have the intern report that you're going?
Yes, we have that to follow for guidance.
And how often does this committee meet?
Um, we brought it to about four times a year, the last time we met, yeah. But we have other things going on in the background, but really the, the larger committee only meets about four times a year.
That's where the board member comes?
Yes, correct.
If I might, I worked with Al to have a bit of a handoff and participated in the last couple of meetings. It's interesting to note the evolution of sustainability in the district from only operations, and we've done a great deal of operations, to also, um, touching, uh, culture and curriculum and, uh, you know, implication in, in vendor practices, uh, sort of a number of, it's, it's like level two or level three of sustainability. And then the, the second observation I had was that the group is, um, really wanting a strong board relationship. And so the board member, um, on the committee doesn't have to know a lot about sustainability, um, you know, specifically, but I think, uh, needs to be a good translator to the board in terms of what the board would look for around resourcing, for example, or around understanding and helping implement priorities in the sustainability management plan.
Um, I think we have a good sense of what long-range planning is all about.
Oh, I'm going to get to do a presentation and Denise.
Yeah. Uh, what I will, what I will just say about long-range planning is that we, I think we should possibly postpone that because I think we have to talk about sort of what long, because we're going to have to look at the makeup of long-range planning, um, if we're going to have, because traditionally it's been one board and it's not even a member of the committee, it's a liaison between the committee and the board. Um, this is a committee that's been in place for decades. It was a, again, a citizen-established committee and we can't even find like the original charter because it's like, it's been going on for decades. So we, I think as a board, we have to have a, a greater conversation in terms of, you know, the makeup of the committee. Right now it's like there's supposed to be three reps from each town. That hasn't happened for quite a while. We can't get three reps from each town. So, you know, how do we want to restructure that, if we even are able to restructure that?
So Denise, my question to you and Heather is, um, should you guys review the, the current practices and, and then come back to the full board and say, this is what we have been doing, this is what we recommend, so that it'll start the conversation because most of the board hasn't been directly involved in the committee. So I think we'd be looking for the committee for advice.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. We could, we could definitely do that. But there's also no, no rush that we have to have this in place. Like the, the committee really does most of its work norm, in a normal year, like basically starting to meet like in August, September and in early fall.
But I've heard that Heather's a vicious taskmaster since she took it.
She is, she is. But yes, I think that's a good idea. We can certainly put that together.
Can't really build the model till we get the enrollment and that doesn't come in until late October. So we do some warm-up stuff.
So maybe between now and then, Heather and Denise, you guys can review how it's set up and how you would recommend to the board it be set up for the future.
All right. I see that you have struck out the middle school planning committee. Are we finished with?
Well, um, it's construction and deconstruction now, so whoever along that goes on for.
Is that group still meeting?
Weekly.
Yep.
Weekly, yeah. And then the sabbatical committee, um, meets to review, uh, applications from the faculty for sabbaticals. And, um, I think we heard from Tom at the last meeting, a suggestion that we consider how we emphasize the purpose of the sabbatical process. That review is typically in the fall. My, I forget what time of year that is.
So it starts in January is when the sabbatical committee meets to go over, to go over proposals. That's when we have our first meeting and then it goes into March. So any preliminary work that we would want to do on the way the policy reads and, and what the application process is like, we would want to do that before we start giving, uh, sending the applications out to faculty, which usually happens in November, December, somewhere around there. We usually start to, um, send that out and give, give people an opportunity to apply. So we would, we would have to start pretty quickly in the fall, um, looking at the policy for review.
And so Suzanne, just as we just talked about long range, it would be helpful if the sabbatical committee met, even if there's not a board member on it, to take on Tom's suggestion, where would we modify it and bring that back to the board? And when the committee is meeting, what is the board's commitment? How many meetings between January and March?
So it depends on, depends on the number of applicants. Um, it, I, I hate to say that, but it does depend on the number of applicants and the number of times we, um, you know, the number of people that come forward. So we start, um, in January going over the process. Um, February is when the applications come in and we review. It usually requires people to read the applications ahead of time before we meet. And then we usually have a couple of meetings to discuss the applications, depending on how many there are. Um, and then we bring people in to talk about their application. So that usually, depending again on how many there are, that would be a couple more meetings. So it's more like the intensity is, is a shorter period of time than maybe some of the other committees. But it, again, I hate to be vague about it, but we don't really know how many people apply, so it's hard to say how many times we would meet.
But what you just described sounds like at least a half dozen.
Yes. Yep.
All right.
And just try to give them a sense so that they know what they're buying into.
So January to March and probably around six, six-ish times.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then the equity committee, that's the governance equity committee.
So Yusi can speak to this if she, she, or Denise for that matter.
Go ahead.
Sure. The, the committee itself has, was formed by Jim five years ago. Since I've been on, um, we've met, uh, bi-weekly last year. This year we meet every three weeks. There, um, I'd say three main functions. One is simply sensing in, in terms of, um, understanding what's going on in the schools. We have, it's a multi-stakeholder, um, committee that has teachers and students and administrators and community members. So it's really wonderful to know what's, uh, what's going on and what people are feeling in the, um, schools as well as what's in the, um, community and related efforts. So sort of just the knowledge sharing there. Um, second, learning and reflecting. So we'll, um, have presentations or read articles and discuss. And, um, third is the work itself. We've put on, um, two events this year. We helped craft the job description, uh, put recommendations forward to, to policy change and, uh, essentially serve as a, 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 a support for administration or for different parts of the district if they're looking for additional capacity or expertise around certain related efforts.
Denise, did you want to add anything?
No, I think.
So this is in terms of commitment, unlike, uh, earlier ones, this is a pretty intense commitment, um, on a more than monthly basis. Uh, last year it was twice a month. This year we moved it to every, every three weeks. And, um, you know, with the advent of a DEIJ coordinator, um, you know, that'll all get restructured as we go into the new year and, and what the needs are. But it, it, it's been, um, a pretty regular, pretty regular expectation. And then the committee has worked extremely well and hard. So it's very, it's very gratifying professionally.
All right. And then, and then you had spoken earlier about, about, uh, reactivating the world language committee?
Yes, I would like to reactivate the world language committee. It's, um, you know, from all of our conversations during budget season, uh, the board had, um, asked that, you know, I come back with, you know, a revised proposal addressing a lot of the concerns that were raised. And I would like to, uh, put that committee back in, in play. Um, I'd like to have a board representative there so that, again, they can act as a liaison to the larger board. Um, so, and then the other piece on the equity piece, Michael, before I forget it, is I've got to start the, um, advertising and hiring process for that coordinator. And if we want somebody on board for July 1st, I need to start that relatively quickly. I would look for at least two board members to serve on that.
Do you see that as a separate working group from the equity committee?
I do, uh, because it's going to be a very focused group on a very specific issue. It can still be the people who serve on the equity, but I just want, I just want to make sure that, um, we're very clear that there's a, there's a, a major commitment in time coming right up in the spring. Um, as we've gone through these, I've tried to kind of spell out time commitment. So this would be a lot in a very short window. And then, um, hopefully we will end up with an extraordinary coordinator and, um, have somebody ready to start the new year.
Good. All right. Thank you, thank you for the overview of, of the committee work. Um, I think it's good that we had this discussion, not just for Matt and Heather, but also for the continuing board members. Um, there's nothing that says that you must continue on the committee you've been on. Um, there's also nothing that says you can't continue on the committee that you've been on. And I would also, um, observe that it's not necessarily about having any specific, um, expertise, especially in the representation to other groups. It's more about having interest in the work that those groups do and connecting those groups to the, to the school board.
I wondered whether the communication committee, though.
I wondered whether the communication committee, though that's morphed a bit, qualifies as a representative to other groups or should be considered as part of this process?
That was a superintendent's committee that, I, I don't know if they think that's going to be reactivated or not.
I didn't think it deactivated, actually. I think it's just morphed into this specific, addressing the comments and categorizing those, but I didn't think that, I think that's just an ongoing committee as well, so.
So Dan and I were the, were the representatives to that when it was created a year ago initially. So, all right.
I see that committee as being another one of those ones that will meet regularly, so it's not a short burst type of thing, it's a year-long thing.
All right. So as I, as I said at the beginning of this, please communicate your interest in committee work, or if there are places that you would specifically not like to be asked to join a committee, to Wendy by, by March 25th.
I think it's good, Michael, to point out that why they go to Wendy, because Heather and Matt don't have that reference point. So the way our bylaws work, in between meetings, you guys cannot carry on a conversation about board business. When you're a collective, you are the entity that runs the district. And one of the, before I got here, there was a court injunction related to the, the school board and how it was doing its business. And so we're just really super clear that if we go through Wendy and that there's no, there's no conversations going on in either email or text, that the, the public would, would feel like we were violating our obligation to meet in public and, and, and that's why the agenda is in public and so forth. So until we hash that out further in time, that's the process we've been using. It does work actually very efficiently because Wendy's amazing. And, you know, once you have your wish list to her, then it will be a conversation, as Michael said earlier, between him and Denise in relation to, you know, trying to honor your first choice and, and hopefully your second choice. So I would definitely put a couple of choices down and just tell us that it's your first choice, because we do have a lot of committees and, and most of these are superintendent committees. As Michael pointed out, the policy, finance and negotiations, those are your committees. So you don't see a bunch of people in the meeting, it's you. But when we get to superintendent's committees, you'll see community members, you'll see administrators, you'll see teachers, you'll see parents, because I tend to have committees that are much more inclusive and you're a voice there and you are the messenger to the board in, in those committees.
I'd also recommend for the new ones, I don't know if you've seen the training that School Board Association has, it was some great classes. I know I took that when I first started here. I had, at the time, I had to miss one of these meetings just to go to the, the basic class, but they do some good ones on right to know and being a board member and budgeting and stuff, and it's actually a really good bar. Christina runs most of them and he's, he's been doing this for God knows how long.
And I believe Wendy's already reached out to both of you, right, in terms of the new board member orientation? I'm already scheduled to take one.
Yep.
May 2nd or something?
Yeah, I think they're online now. I used to have to go in person, but.
And they put on really great workshops throughout the school year, so if something pops up and it interests you, all you have to do is let Wendy know and we'll get you registered.
Thank you for mentioning that also, because I realized I skipped over the NHSBA delegate line in here. So Dan has been our, our delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association Assembly last couple of years. The way that we've approached that generally has been that it's, you know, our delegate to that, that gathering that votes on policy positions for the School Boards Association. Anything else to?
Yeah, I got to go to my first in-person delegates' assembly this year, which was much better than online. Anyway, so delegates' assembly, not all school boards, my understanding anyway, not all school boards send a delegate, but it's a really good opportunity for our board to lead and/or weigh in on critical issues at a state level. It is the mechanism by which the School Boards Association sort of checks in on and gets its mandates on particular issues. And, you know, there's ongoing resolutions that can either be amended or removed. There are always new resolutions each year. And, you know, this board has been active and taken a really strong leadership role. The ambiguity around gun laws and our ability in our state to basically enforce policy on a, on federal law has been a key issue. The past couple of years, there's been a lot related to COVID and federal funding and that sort of thing. But yeah, it's, it's a really interesting opportunity and it's, it's kind of, there's some preparation just prior to the delegates' assembly, but other than, and attending the delegates' assembly and representing the board. Other than that, there's not a lot of activity throughout the year.
Thank you. All right, anything else in committees? All right. Were there any other committee updates that we need to talk about tonight? All right, anybody still here for a public comment before we wrap up tonight? Our closing actions, our future meeting, the, the manifest review is at the end of the month. We do have three weeks between meetings because there are five Wednesdays in March this year, so our next regular meeting is April 6th. That will still be here in the high school library. That says to be determined, but we're not ready to move.
We'll be here until, until the devices that we need to run large meetings at the middle school come in, and there's this, those dates have still not been determined.
So most likely we will not move to the middle school recital hall until, until school's out, essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So with that, I would invite a motion adjourned, Brian?
Motion adjourned.
Second from Heather, all those in favor? Seven, six, seven in favor and the sit rep in favor, we are adjourned.
It's my favorite thing to do.
There you go.